Thank you. I just want to ask if everyone could just take a moment of silence for all of those who are serving here and abroad. Thank you. And just due to how we are convening today, I'm going to, if it's okay with my colleagues, wave the Pledge of Allegiance since we don't have a flag or a virtual flag. But what I would like to ask my colleagues is also to take a moment to honor and respect all of those who are still out there, all of our first responders, all of the medical staff, all of the medical employees, the folks who are working in grocery stores and, you know, still making it possible for us to survive in this pandemic, if we could just take a moment to honor them as well. Thank you, everyone. And with that, Madam Clerk, can you read the meeting law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any mediums. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. And also in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Quincy City Council is holding this city council meeting via remote conference services and is being aired on Quincy Access Television, QATV, Channel QATV9, Government Access. And I will also just let folks know that because of the Zoom bombing that has been occurring through this platform, that no one is able to unmute themselves unless you let me know so. And also videos, I ask that they will be turned off as well unless you are actively participating in this meeting. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the first two agenda items. And just put a disclaimer out there, for those of you who are at home and looking at the agenda that's in front of you today, the reason why we are starting to introduce some items to get back into regular council business is because, you know, during this time, one of the things that we cannot do as your elected officials is stop doing the work that's important and to serve all of you. And so, you know, we do understand that the first priority and top priority for all of us is to make sure that we are doing everything we can to protect the health and well-being of all the residents in the city. But we also need to make sure that we're also conducting business so that we're continuing to serve the residents here in the city. So with that, these first two items on the agenda are to start to slowly get us back to regular operations here in the council. And with those disclaimers, Madam Clerk, if you could just read the first item on the agenda, please.
Of course. 2020-070, appropriation for $680,000.
Wait the reading.
Yeah, Councilwoman Palmucci, you'd like to wait the reading?
Yep.
Okay. And on the order, Counselor?
Uh, I would defer to Finance Committee. I just didn't want to listen to the reading of it. Are you assuming this is going into Finance Committee, Mr. Walker?
Madam President?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion to move to Finance. Counselor Phelan?
I'd just like to say, this is a project that's been waiting for a long time now. Or it wouldn't have been brought up. So, you know, I support moving it to Finance, and we'll talk about it on a later date, but so we can get the work done this summer. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else on the item?
Yeah, I wasn't, Councilor Phelan, I wasn't trying to, my understanding is it's going to Finance. I don't want...
Yeah, that's fine.
You thought it was going to pass. I don't, I don't want to...
No, no, I knew it was going to go to Finance. I just wanted to say.
Okay. All right. I don't want to step on your toes and all that.
Not a problem. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you to you both. Again, any, so if no one else has anything else on this item, so all those in favor to move to Finance?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. We'll move that item to Finance. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number two, 2020-071, a resolve on budgetary update and financial forecast.
Thank you, Madam. Go ahead, Counselor.
Madam President, you and I obviously had discussions prior to this being introduced tonight. I've also connected with several of the council members. And obviously, you know, with the pandemic amongst us has certainly sent a shockwave throughout the national... I mean, I know there's a lot of, you know, questions and sort of thoughts around how that may articulate itself to us locally in Quincy. So, the resolution is simply asking for, you know, an interactive dialogue with the city council, as well as the administration, also the city's financial advisor, who we haven't heard from in some time, just to kind of get more of a thought process, sort of where we're at, where we think we're heading. And obviously, you know, to kind of set the table, set the tone for the budget season, which is also vastly approaching. I believe, Madam President, correct me if I'm wrong, you were looking to this, basically, presentation of the next city council agenda. And, you know, I've also had discussions with the administration. So, other than that, if, I mean, the resolution speaks for itself, I would certainly welcome any of, you know, my colleagues to expand on the ask, if you will, in terms of what you'd like to see for the presentation. But I think that at least creates a, you know, a go-forward framework. So with that, I would just move approval. And subsequently, I believe it'll come back in the form of an update with a presentation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Okay, second by Counselor McCarthy. Was that you?
No, but I'll second it.
My apologies. Who was Counselor Harris? Was that you that seconded that?
No, I think that Counselor DeBona.
Okay, got it. Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Counselor Crowell, seconded by Counselor DeBona. Does anybody like to speak on the motion? Please raise your hand.
Madam President?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. Just, Madam President, thank you for putting this on for tonight. We're going through a little tough times, obviously. I'm happy to co-sponsor this resolution. I think, obviously, a municipality like ourselves, a city, we depend on a lot of state funding, you know, Chapter 70, Chapter 90. This also affects our meals tax, hotel, motel tax, our sales tax, obviously, throughout the state. But I'm just, I'm happy to support this resolution. It's good to get the dialogue out there upfront. I know we're in early April, but we don't know how long this is going to really go on for. And budgeted into 21, 2021, we need to look at and forecast now and see how it goes. So, I'm looking forward to getting some information from some of our specialists. Maybe, maybe they'll be able to come on here Zoom. So, just in general, we, we're in a situation where some of the financial hardships other people have been asking about, I think we should need to put into discussion. So, I'm happy to support this, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to approve, and we also do have a second. Would anyone else like to speak, Counselor Palmucci?
Yes, if I could, through you too, Mr. Walker, who I suspect will be assembling the presentation for the update on the next, at the next meeting. If you could, I know you, you and I have talked offline, and I know Mr. Mason is working on some projections. If we could do a best-case, worst-case scenario, and maybe a, you know, middle scenario in terms of what we expect the pandemic's impact to be on municipal finances. I know there's some, there's some federal money that may be coming our way, which may or may not be determined, and maybe another round of federal money. But if we could put, put it together so that we can see, if you can put it together so that we can see a best-case, worst-case, so that we have the full spectrum of what potentially lies ahead of us in the next budget season, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Councilwoman Mahoney?
Through you too, Mr. Walker as well. I'm sure in the presentation, one of the things that we definitely want to take a look at in the last meeting, we had said that the potential that we could, we could spend in other line items, if we could just keep a close eye on what monies we are spending, just so that we can have a good inventory of what's happened, that'd be very helpful, and also very helpful for the presentation as well.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCarthy, you wanted to speak as well?
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. Just through you to Mr. Walker, a quick question. And I'm hearing, our next meeting will be a week from tonight, correct?
Correct.
So, Mr. Walker, does that give you enough time in the resolve to cover everything and get all that information together?
The information gathering won't be a problem, Counselor. It's the scheduling of outside parties on a day specific that I don't know about yet. I'm assuming it'll be fine, but that would be the only hang-up, I think, if the request is to have Cinder available. That depends on her schedule.
And that's the only outside party that you'd be concerned about?
I believe so.
Okay. Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And just before we move on, we do have some folks in the public who are listening in and tuning into this meeting as they are able to under the open meeting law. But this is still being conducted as a regular council meeting, so comments are limited to my colleagues on the council. They are otherwise opened up during public hearings, but this is not a public hearing, just to let folks know. So with that, do any of my colleagues have any other questions? Okay, with that, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Crowell?
Yes.
Counselor DeBona?
Yep.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney?
Yeah.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci?
Yes.
Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Okay, item passes. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item is the coronavirus update, first from the Health Department. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. And so, to my colleagues, we're going to go ahead and go through updates per category, and then do questions before we move on to the next presenter. So, we're going to start with Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Jones, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Yes, thank you for...
Hi, how are you?
Hi, good. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you for having me. So, I'd like to provide an update on the coronavirus. I think last time we spoke, I think I spoke in front of the council regarding the beginning of the coronavirus pandemic that we're experiencing. And it has greatly changed, as we all know, since that time. To give you an update today, the numbers, we have a total of 189 cases. We have 54 of those 189 cases that have recovered. We've had nine deaths so far in the city. We are monitoring over 110 contacts to these cases presently. We're, we're seeing probably 40% of those that were, that are being diagnosed having no apparent origin of, of where they have maybe contacted somebody and gotten the virus. About 9 or 10% of the cases we first saw were traced to the Biogen Conference in Boston. We're seeing around 20, maybe a little bit more, 20% that are healthcare workers, another 20% that are contacts to positive cases. So, for example, a husband would get it, and then the wife might get it, or one of their children might get it. Only 3% are travel-related, and at any one given point, 2 to 5% might be under investigation. So, we're seeing these numbers hold true as the numbers go up. Our average range for the cases is right around 48. We're seeing a lot of cases, younger cases, right now in, in what's coming in lately. I did want to talk a little bit about our collaborative effort that we've begun since the pandemic has started to elevate. I work closely, very closely, on a daily basis with Mayor Koch, the mayor's office, Chris Walker, Helen Murphy, with Chief Jackson and Chief Keenan. For daily updates, what we're doing is making sure our first responders are notified per the governor's order of addresses of active cases, so they're not going in blindly if there's an emergency call there. We're also working with Quincy Housing Authority, so they have some idea that there may be cases in their building. We're doing as much as we can without violating HIPAA laws, so we have to be careful with that. We've had, we've worked closely before the schools were closed with Dr. DeCristofaro and the school nurses, Quincy Public School Nurses. We're also having an ongoing dialogue with our healthcare providers, Mannet Health particularly, our nursing homes, rehab centers, and assisted livings, which we do have cases at all of, pretty much all of the places in Quincy. And we are also working closely with our business partners, just to keep business partners and residents updated on what's going on, the changes in the orders, what's closed, what's considered an essential business, along with doing the screenings and the tracing, contact tracing of these COVID-19 cases. It is a definite collaborative effort. We also work with the DPW, who may have to go into some of these residents with sore break-ins, sore overflows. And so, we want to make sure they know that they're going into a, are able to go into a particular resident, again, without violating HIPAA laws. And I think it's worked out very well so far. You can, you know, you can talk to Chief Jackson and Chief Keenan afterwards about the collaborative effort. But I think, you know, it's been extremely busy. My staff in the Health Department have been tremendously working hard. We have cross-trained everybody before this, so they know exactly what they need to do. And we've been working, myself, my two nurses, and most of my staff, seven days a week in the office, because it's just easier to do what we have to do in the office. We deliver masks, we deliver thermometers to our patients that we're monitoring, and we check temperatures over the phone with them, monitor symptoms. So, it's a, it's an ongoing process. A lot of phone calls to residents, from residents to, they're afraid, and they're nervous, and they have a lot of questions. And we're here 24/7 to answer their questions. So hopefully, you know, we're just making it through this day by day, and we're, we're told that this is, this is the surge. This coming week will be the surge, and we have seen an increase of cases. Originally, we were getting four or five cases. We're now getting about 17 new cases a day on the average, and we expect that to increase a little bit more. We have cases in senior houses, and we do have cases in nursing homes. In one particular one nursing home has about 11 cases right now. The State Department of Public Health takes care of those separately from us. So, that's kind of where we're at right now, as of today.
Great, thank you so much, Ruth, for that update. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to my colleagues for questions first. And so, just to maintain order, folks, if you can raise your hands if you have questions for Ruth, I'll make note here if you have questions. Counselor Palmucci, you're up first.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me be the first of, among everyone, I'm sure, who will address you tonight. Ms. Johnston, thank you for the hard work that you've put in and that your team has put in. Obviously, it's very important work. I don't need to say that to you, but just want you to know that this body and certainly this Counselor appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
We, so we have a couple of things going on. So, we have the, who's manning the hotline? Are you manning the hotline at the city?
So, the hotline is actually not a manned number. It is a recorded line that basically explains the basics of COVID-19, social distancing, the criteria for testing, and basically informs people to contact their doctor, their physician, if they have a test. And then it, if people have more question, at the end of the recording, it says to, it calls to my number or to constituent services.
Okay. And that's when you're talking to folks who you indicated were frightened, and you're kind of walking through the temperatures and symptoms with them? That's how they're getting to you?
Yeah. Well, and people are just calling me directly. We've done, I've done a lot of PR with the mayor on, on the issue. We have information on the Quincy website that are daily updates on the numbers. My number is, my phone number is there, so people can call me directly. When I leave at night, my desk phone is over to my cellphone, as, as do my nurses also. So, somebody can get ahold of the Health Department, whether it's my cell for the nurses 24/7. When we monitor people, we have to leave an emergency phone number, because we don't want them to just go to an emergency room if they're having breathing issues, or to their doctor, we want to know about it. So, we're on call 24/7 until this is over.
Right. We don't want people to go to the doctors, because either they could spread it, or if they don't have it, they could get it, right?
Absolutely. We want to make sure that they call first and get evaluated over the phone. Obviously, if they're having difficulty breathing, we want them to call 911. But they're also instructed to call us so that we know what's happening. We also will then call dispatch at the police station, just to let them know that they may be going to a case that is an isolation case.
Okay. Yeah, personally, I broke my foot last week, and the last place I was going to go was to the doctors.
Absolutely.
I've been limping for a week, and...
Oh, boy.
I expect it will be longer. But, so, and I don't want to take up too much of the time, and I know other councils have questions, too. I just, in terms of the case rate, so the, the, you had said it was four or five, I believe, and then now it's more like 17 a day?
Correct.
Where does that put us? Have you done some of the math on that and see where that puts us in terms of some of the other hotspots or other places around the world or the country in terms of the doubling of the cases, right? That's, that's one of the metrics that is used to quantify the spread of the virus, is how many days it takes to double the number, right?
Right. I have not done that, Counselor, only because it's just been so crazy here. I know I am sending information to Chris Walker and Eric Mason, who is doing some wonderful data on it. And he would, I'm sure, would be better at answering this than I am. I know that when I compared the total number of cases to surrounding towns such as Waymouth, and Milton, and Braintree, we are higher, you know, than the surrounding towns. At one point, Waymouth had 60 cases, and we had probably 140. So, we were more than double of that city. Again, bigger city. One of the things that we've looked at is we, we've seen that a lot of our cases are healthcare workers who happen to live in the Quincy possibly work in Boston, because of our proximity to Boston. So, I think that has upped our numbers a little bit, or maybe more than a little bit, from some of the other cities and towns. But the actual data, as far as comparing it to other states and other countries, no, I have not done that yet.
Okay. And in terms of, in terms of supplies, is your office supplied with everything you need in terms of personal protection equipment?
We're okay right now. We had ordered some prior to, at the beginning of this. We are getting little bits and pieces of past orders for masks. We're great with gloves. We have scrambled at some point to get thermometers, but we have been able to keep an amount of thermometers that we can send with, we usually send a mask and thermometer to the patients that we're monitoring, because we have to monitor them for sometimes seven days, sometimes 14 days. And a lot of people, surprisingly, don't have thermometers in the house. So, we scrambled a little bit to get that, but right now, we're doing okay. We're getting some supplies in bits and pieces. We have given some of our supplies to some of the healthcare providers that have needed it more than we have, such as Mannet Healthcare, and some of the private doctors' offices that might still be open. So, we're hoping to help, you know, people along the way that really need it more than we do. But we keep enough, and I think we're okay right now.
And I had sent you an email, I don't know, it was Friday or something, about someone who wanted to donate some masks. Where should I send someone who wants to donate masks?
They can, yeah.
I don't want to bother you, but I think you're probably best positioned to figure out where they should go and where they're needed.
Absolutely. And please, not, not a bother. If we can get, you know, any masks or equipment in, we're happy to take it. They can come right to the Health Department, even though our office is locked and not closed, I mean, not open to the public. They, we have a buzzer on the front door, and if they wanted to offer some masks for us, masks are the biggest things that, that we're seeing a need for. We are happy to take it. They can ring the buzzer, and one of us will come to the door, and they can just leave it, leave the mask right there, and we'll get it. We've, we've had lots of community members donating masks, and we so appreciate it. We've even had some of the community members making cloth masks. And even though that's probably not appropriate for a healthcare situation, it may be appropriate for people who want to feel more comfortable wearing a mask, walking around, going to the supermarket, those type of things. So, we appreciate all those people who have been so generous to donate those things to us, and will continue to take them if people want to drop them off.
Okay. And again, thank you very much for all of your hard work, and we wish, I certainly wish that you and your nurses and your team stays, stays healthy.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mahoney?
Hi, I didn't know I was next. Thanks, Ruth. First of all, like Brian, I want to make sure that your, your efforts have been unbelievable, and I want to thank you and everybody that's working in the city of Quincy to protect our residents here. I do have a couple of questions, and without a curiosity, of the 189 cases, you said 54 have recovered, so that leaves 135 cases. Are any of those cases, are they hospitalized? How severe are those cases?
We have about probably four cases still hospitalized. Some of them severe in the beginning, where, where patients had to be intubated. They have, most of them have come off of intubation, not all of them, and are being hospitalized. Some of them, you know, depending on their, their history, medical history, take longer to, to get better in these cases. But the majority of our cases are quarantining or isolating at home, and, and doing well at home. So, I would say, you know, there's a few that are still hospitalized, but the majority do well, pretty well at home.
And are they hospitalized, is there one hospital they go into, or are they all over, or?
They're all over. We have patients at Mass General, we have patients at, we have one at Milton, I believe, Beth Israel Deacon, this is another hospital that we see a lot of people at. So, they're, they're mostly in Boston, but...
And the ages of the people who are hospitalized, are they in the same demographic, or?
We have, most of them are older patients that end up hospitalized, but we have some, probably two, that are probably in their 50s that are hospitalized.
And then you said that, I think, I think you said, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you said the senior, the assisted livings and some of the rehab, they have cases? Do you have one that has 11 cases?
We have one, one nursing home or rehab that has 11 cases so far. We have two other nursing homes that have some cases. We have an assisted living that has had some cases. And the nursing homes particularly, those go directly over to the State Department of Public Health, and they monitor the cases and monitor what's being done in the nursing homes. But we are notified by the state as to which nursing homes are involved.
So, does the state go in and then, and then just share the information with you? You're not going into all of these 135 to collect the information, correct, or you are?
As far as the cases, you mean, or the nursing homes? So, the cases directly come, every positive COVID-19 case on a Quincy resident comes directly to the Health Department through the Mass Department of Public Health. There is a, an electronic system from Health and Human Services called Maven. And we deal with all our communicable diseases through Maven. We have free years, but COVID-19 cases also come through Maven. So, we get every case directly. We have to call the case, do an investigation, do a contact tracing, and then we have to call all the contacts, because contacts also need to be quarantined. So, the cases are quarant, the cases are isolated, the contacts are quarantined. We have to do a whole tracing of that cases, work, contacts, social contacts, and, and then we, we do that on every case.
That's so much work, and I appreciate that. It's a lot of, lot of work. How many people do you have working with you, Ruth, to, to help you man all of this? It's a lot of...
So, yeah, we have my, my entire department. We have 12 people besides myself. So, myself and two nurses, all our housing inspectors, food inspectors are all trained, cross-trained to help with the phone calls, our chief sanitarian. We have our administrative assistant, our secretary, and our... We have our administrative assistant, our secretary, and our translators all helping to make phone calls or deliver the thermometers and the masks to people.
And then, and I think the last, we were doing the, we were doing the special financing for it. Are there some school nurses as well that are now on part of your team as well or?
We had school nurses and they've been very generous with their offer. We've had school nurses in the beginning, but what happened was we ended up, when the city went to kind of a skeleton staff, the rest of, you know, and, and a lot of the different businesses closed, the restaurants closed. So my staff became available to help, to do all that. And so where they were already cross-trained to do this, it was just much easier for them to step in and do what they were already trained to do. Another factor is we try to let as little, as few people as possible into the health department while we're here because we don't want to get sick. If we get sick, we're all in trouble. So we want to try to stay as healthy as we can with having, having the least amount of people in here as we can.
Exactly. I just wanted to ask that question because it's a lot of, it's a lot of work and I was just wondering what the exposure was to some of your staff, just because you want to make sure that everybody's, you know, getting the fair opportunity to have not only rest, but do all the work that you're doing.
Sure.
So I want to thank you very much. Is there, is, is there any, you know, I know that there's throughout the city that they're trying to keep people from congregating, doing different things. Any more recommendations that you would have for the general public just to, to maybe get through the next two weeks that you're, that would be safe and advisable?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think people need to really take this serious. I think social distancing has not been adhered to as much as it should be. I think the fact that the DCR closed down the parking lot at Wallaston Beach made a huge difference with people not congregating.
I think they're still out there today though.
Yeah, and, and it's hard. I know, I know the weather's beautiful and people are getting, getting a little bit antsy in the house, but social distancing is so important. We have found it very hard to remind people to, to continue to do, do this, you know, washing your hands on a regular basis. I know there's been some recommendations for people to wear masks out in public. And I just want to let people know that when you're wearing a mask out in public, it's not really protecting you, it's protecting the other person because the sick person should be the one wearing the mask. And the whole idea of wearing a mask out in public is that if you were a case that you didn't know you were a case or you didn't have symptoms, which we have seen some asymptomatic cases, that you wouldn't be walking around coughing and sneezing and maybe talking and letting droplets out. So the mask that you're wearing protects the other person, not you, and I want people to be aware of that, that they don't get a false sense of putting a mask on, walking out and thinking everything is okay. You still have to practice social distancing. We're trying to limit the amount of visitors in senior houses because they're our highest risk population and people going in and out, again, could be asymptomatic and carrying the virus. So I think those are the most important things that we want people to realize.
And one other question, one, something that came to me and I think a lot of people should, people were asking, should, is it advisable for people who are riding bikes or running to wear masks? I think it's, it's a personal thing. People are being requested to wear them, but they can't be forced to wear them.
Exactly. It's, it's a recommendation and the, and the, and the difficult part about that is masks aren't available.
Right.
So even though they're making the recommendation, it's very hard to get masks now. One of the things that they recommended is wearing a bandana or a cloth or a scarf around if you wanted to do that. But I think if, you know, the most important thing is social distancing, most important.
Well, I thank you very much and please tell everybody and your staff that I, I thank and I, I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Ruth, how are you Ruth? You doing well?
Doing well, thank you. Yes, thanks for asking.
Good. Let's stay on social distancing for a second.
Sure.
So I've been working from home, just about it, like everybody else. I've been in Quincy a lot and I've been out in Ward a lot in regards to riding around and, and seeing at least Ward 1 has been doing pretty well with the social distancing down in the neighborhoods and et cetera in some of the parks. It's been brought up to me by a couple of folks about the track. This might be a question for Mr. Walker, about the tennis courts. With the nice weather approaching, Saturday, the track was pretty full of people and of course, they're all walking in groups, which was a little concern on the track. The tennis court, again, and I don't want to sound like I'm trying to keep everybody in from getting a nice fresh air, was again, pretty busy this weekend with the nice weather. I didn't know and I know, and I, and my hats off to the, to the police that have been out there trying to make, move, move kids along and move people along from groups, but I feel like the track and, and at least the tennis court down here by Quincy High, I haven't been up in other areas of the city, is still pretty populated. And I'm afraid that with a flattening of the curve, hopefully that is heading in that direction, people will let their guard down and bunch up a little more on the track. There was probably 60 people on the track on Saturday and I, and I, I just don't see them separating themselves.
Through you, Madam President, as of today, communication between the police chief, the mayor and Commissioner Murphy, the tennis courts will be locked going forward. You are, you are right, counselor, you know, the, the best advice we gave, sometimes folks chose to ignore it. We started with the basketball hoops and now moved on to the tennis courts because there were people gathering there. I think the track is a little bit different. We are encouraging people to go out and walk around if they get some exercise. Walking is okay. Walking past someone is okay. And I'll let the, the chief of police speak to it, but if there are people actually congregating in groups at any public facility, whether it be the track or any park, that's when the police will take notice.
So, so just an example, Chris, five, six people walking right next to each other on the track, all just shooting the breeze, that's okay?
Well, you get into, probably not, but if you get into the, you get into the weeds of who those five people are in relationship, if they're all the same five people in the same house, you know, then, then yes, I guess it would be. But generally speaking, no, but by the same token, I don't know that, there's only so much closure that we can do here and I, I don't think that walking, yeah, walking isn't going, we're not going to, I don't know that the police are ever going to want to get into a point where they're, if they're not congregating in groups, that they're, they're going to want to be in a place where they're, they're interrupting that.
Could I, could I speak to that for a moment, counselor? You know, one, one of the things that helps us with social distancing and, and with, with not transmitting this virus is, is movement. So this is why the supermarkets are allowed to stay open because of the fact that when people are in transit, you're not getting that close contact for a sustained 15 minutes. And that's when the highest risk of transmission is. Like Mr. Walker had pointed out, it's, it's okay for families to stay close to each other. What we get concerned with is when there are groups of people from different families intermingling too close, within six feet for more than 15 minutes. And so, you know, there, there has been a collaborative effort to watch the places that this would happen, such as the playgrounds, all the, the playground equipment is, is roped off, the basketball hoops are all covered over. And like Mr. Walker said, the tennis courts will be addressed. It's, it's unfortunate that we have to have police to remind people to social distance. People should be doing this responsibly on their own, but when that need is, is seen, then Chief Keenan has been great with having the police department go, go out and intervene.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted to get a little clarification because I would think if they were bunching up on the track, I mean, I'm not a big walker, but I've been out walking around and I, I just walk the neighborhoods. And that way I'm not caught up in a, you know, you know, kind of a circle effect at the track where you bunch up. And I, I, I just wanted to clarify that because folks were just starting to ask me and I could see it, especially this past weekend, at both locations, it was beautiful out, so they were out. But I, I, I understand and I just want to make sure, hopefully folks at home are listening and, you know, understanding this, that that's clarified so they're, they're not worried if they do get on the track. And that's all I have, Ruth. That's all I want to talk about. I think you've done a tremendous job with this. I, I think the city's done a, a tremendous job also with responding to the needs, father bills, I know we're going to talk about that, and protecting our first responders and, and you guys have been all over it since day one. The mayor has been great keeping a council, along with Mr. Walker, in, in tune daily on anything that would be of, of a grave concern and hopefully we're, we're, we're past that. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Madam President. And Ruth, Ruth and your group, all the first responders and all the frontline folks, I just want to say how proud, proud everybody is of, of yous and thank you. Ruth, I, I'm going to make a statement and I hope that you, you back me up on this.
Sure.
Somebody is not feeling well and who is having to go to work on a daily basis. I tell my folks and I think we should be telling our folks, the folks out there, if you're not feeling well, don't go to work. Don't you agree with that?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, we've been saying that from the beginning. We say that every flu season, but it's so much more pertinent right now in the middle of a pandemic that if someone does not feel well, they should not be in work. They should call their healthcare provider, they should stay home and not return until they're feeling better. And unfortunately, we've seen with some of our cases that it's someone who's gone into work and gone into work ill. And if you look at the numbers and the data with this virus, each COVID-19 positive case probably affects or transmits to two to three people on an average. And so if you keep that in mind, you can see how quickly one or two cases can spread out to thousands of cases. And so absolutely, I back you up on that, counselor. If you don't feel good, you should stay home.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ruth, with that.
Thank you.
I want to thank the administration during this period of time. Always, there's always somebody there answering a question for us and, and to the folks out there, we're all, every counselor is, is still, you know, there for yous. We're all, we're all answering emails and phone calls. So again, thank you to what everybody, whatever we're doing, everybody, please be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Phelan?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I guess this would be a question for Commissioner Jones. Well, I will reiterate what all the other councils have said. The health department has done a great job, all our first responders, everyone in the city who continue to work. So great, appreciate it. But a question I have, Ruth, we know all the people have been tested. We don't really know a lot of people who haven't been tested because if you're a certain group, you're not receiving a test. I know what happened with a member of my family, we were quarantining for 14, 14 days. We had him back and forth, talking to the doctor almost every day and the symptoms were basically seen like COVID. Is there any way to tell how many people actually have it? I know the numbers we get, but isn't it kind of really hard to know how many people really have it?
It, it really is, counselor. The, there's certain criteria from the beginning of this pandemic, certain criteria that people have to meet before they're tested. And initially that was to, because we did not have a lot of test kits in Massachusetts and so they were prioritizing the testing to make sure that those in most need and, and those at higher risk got tested. That has expanded and the amount of testing has greatly increased, which is part of the reason that we're seeing so many more cases and that's a good thing. I would think that as time goes on, we get more test kits, maybe there may be a, a more immediate type of test like they do for rapid strep or rapid flu, that they may end up having a test like that for coronavirus, that people would be tested and get their results within, you know, 10 or 15 minutes and then action could be taken right then and there. But right now, I agree with you, there are probably a lot of people that might have it, that not know that they have it. We're finding a lot of people asymptomatic. They're not even having symptoms and having very mild cases or no cases, you know, no symptoms at all. And these people eventually, for some reason, might be tested and test positive. One of the things that we're seeing, we're hearing people tell us is that the only symptom they're having is they lose their sense of smell and their, their taste. And that's not even really one of the initial symptoms that we were told of with coronavirus. So we're learning as we go along with this and yes, I do probably think that there's more cases out there than we know. I, I don't know how many. I heard Dr. Fauci say that probably 50% of cases are asymptomatic and if that's the case, there's a lot more cases out there. So that's why the social distancing becomes so important and why the stay-at-home order becomes so important. It's unfortunate that many people have taken this stay-at-home order as a mini-vacation, excuse me, and it's not. It's, it's to keep you safe, to keep your family safe and to keep other people safe. There are those asymptomatic people that could go visit, you know, their grandma, their grandpa, and all of a sudden grandma and grandpa end up in the ICU and become gravely ill. So all the things that the governor has implemented, that the mayor has implemented in the city are so important to be followed by people because they all make a huge difference.
Yeah, I think you make a great point that there were people that, luckily, a member of my family was quite a mild, but, but we didn't take any chances and we quarantined for 14 days and it worked out. So I, I'd like to thank you and your staff for doing everything. I see our partners, the ambulances are also on. I think as we always thank the first responders, they were also at all the calls. So we thank Brewster for all their, their great work. It's been very busy and Chief and all Chiefs, Police and Fire, done an excellent job and just, we're here to help, whatever we can do to help, help them do the job at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Phelan. Counselor Devana?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Ruth Jones, please. Ruth, thank you for all your hard work out there and your team. I know first responders, police and fire, you guys are all doing a great job out there, getting good remarks from everybody in the, in public. Just to piggyback a little bit upon what's been spoken about with the social distancing, I know that some of the stores out there, like the Walmarts and the Home Depots have now started to do, as many people that come into the store, they're having a line outside to kind of navigate how many people inside the store. I know at one of the Trader Joe's outside the city here and they do it as well, but you know, there are a few that aren't doing it right now, like Stop &amp; Shop. And I don't want to zero anybody out, but is there any jurisdiction upon us as a municipality that we could control a little bit of that or is that something that's based on each store?
So, no, we, we can control that and the control actually comes through this department in cooperation also with the City Clerk's Office, Detective Follen, who helps on these types of issues. So the, the governor's order, you know, made supermarkets and, and any, any of these stores that served or sold food part of the essential services that stay open. The order that the governor had put for no more than 10 people doesn't apply to supermarkets. However, they do still have to follow the social distancing orders. And so what And so what we have been doing, and we've been getting um a good number of complaints from people. I have my two food inspectors. One of the things that they're out doing um now is they are going out and, and they are um going in and, and inspecting restaurants, even though the restaurants are only open for takeout, we want to make sure that they're still following all the sanitary um guidelines and the FDA guidelines that they're supposed to be following. But we have our um, our inspectors also going out um every so often to these complaints that they're not social distancing. I, I have to say that um most of the stores have done a, a pretty good job um of putting tape on the floor, keeping people six foot, six feet apart, um maybe some barriers in between um the customer and the cashier. However, sometimes um they get, they may get remiss and that's when we get the calls and our um inspectors go right down and make sure that they know that um they still have to follow social distancing and, and make sure they're not um having people closer in the stores. It, it tends to get a little difficult when you have a line of people going into a register um unless somebody there is monitoring it. And that's what we're, we're asking the stores to do. So we do get complaints. We are on that um and our inspectors are out there um checking everything out, make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Yes, I know it's something that we're gonna have to adjust to because we all need to buy. I know that all of us need to go to the supermarket somehow unless it's delivered. But we also got the CVSs and the Walgreens where we also need medications and uh I know the drive-through has been pretty, pretty well up to date and doing well. But um I know it's, it, it just you talking about how it's gonna spike up a little bit moving forward that um we make sure we kind of monitor that in some of the stores.
Sure.
Um, just for the future, I, I know it's um, um, it's somewhere we're gonna have to go to. We're gonna have to go to the supermarket to get food. But um my second question is, is I know Boston's kind of um put kind of in place the curfew from nine PM to six AM.
Right.
Um, is there anything, I mean, and this is also from Mr. Walker too, if uh, I know we're not probably at that point yet. Um, is there something that's been spoken about at all or is anything that we can do uh so have less people out there at, at different times of the day?
I would defer that to Mr. Walker right now.
Okay.
Through you, Madam President. Uh, Counselor, we're keeping an eye on that. I'm talking to the Police Department and talking to our folks. We don't seem to be having a nighttime issue yet uh relative to any people congregating in, in outdoor areas or places where they generally shouldn't be. Um, Boston obviously has a different set of facts on the ground uh that they're dealing with uh to some extent. So I think it's a little bit different, but it's something obviously we would keep an eye on. Uh, but right now we don't see where uh that round peg that surrounds round hole and anything that, that is or isn't happening uh in Quincy.
You know, just to take it a little step further. I mean, all of us were once teenagers before and then we got no school. So then the teenagers are thinking about where to go, what to do. And um I, I just kind of was thinking about, you know, as we're moving forward here and we don't know um what we're doing with the schools, obviously. We're to May fourth right now, but we don't know if that'll be extended and, and, and the, and the information is always changing. So thank you for working on it. I appreciate that. And um Ruth, I, Ruth, and I appreciate all your hard work and thank you and keep it going.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, does any of my other colleagues have any other questions for the Commissioner? Okay, I'm seeing that Commissioner, I just have one question for you um before we let you go. So we, uh, you had mentioned earlier that we're sort of coming into the peak of it right now over the course of the next two weeks. Um, you had mentioned a little bit about the social distancing and how, you know, we just want to, want to reiterate that for folks at home. But could you just go over things that, you know, we can share with our constituents and all of us at home um can be mindful of for the next two weeks, right? Like Counselor Devana said, going to grocery stores, um being mindful about, you know, how close you are to folks when you're outside, you know, in the tracks, when you're going for a walk. But just realistically speaking, I mean, over the course of the next two weeks um and even beyond, you know, just being mindful of different symptoms. Could you talk about some symptoms we should be mindful of? Um, you know, how much precautions we should take when we are going to outside, like going to the store, picking up medications? And then what we should do if we suspect that we are either sick or somebody in our home that we care for is sick?
Sure, sure. Um, great question. So um initially the symptoms that you may see um with COVID-19 are fever. Um, usually the fever is over a hundred point four or higher. Um, a cough, a shortness of breath or difficulty breathing. Um, some people will get a runny nose. Um, and other people have complained of a loss of um their sense of smell and loss of their taste. Um, it's difficult and, and I just want to point this out right now. We're right in the beginning of allergy season. So a lot of people have a runny nose, itchy eyes, maybe an, an itchy cough, um which is not COVID-19, but sometimes hard to distinguish. Um, the distinguishing factor with COVID-19 is usually the fever and the difficulty breathing, the respiratory issues that go along with it. So those are the things that people should be paying attention to a development, sudden development of a fever and some respiratory issues are the biggest, um biggest issues. Um, I think people need to um call their primary care doctor when they're experiencing these symptoms. If they don't have a primary care doctor, there are several um sites that are now doing drive-through testing, but you, you can't just walk in or drive into these sites. There are numbers that people can call and they actually get evaluated. Um, they have a um, a telehealth evaluation um with a physician um or a healthcare provider at these places and they will determine if the person would be eligible for testing. So that's one of the options. But if you have a healthcare provider, you call your healthcare provider, explain the symptoms and your healthcare provider will direct you if you are eligible for testing or not. Um, if someone does go for a test, um they need to stay home um and quarantine until that test result comes back. And then whether the test result is positive or negative, then we at the Health Department will notify you on what you need to do at that point. We do not get results of negative tests. We only get the results here of positive tests. Usually um their healthcare provider will call them um one way or another, but we are only notified of the positive tests. Um, as far as people going out, um the stay-at-home order is really important. Stay at home as much as you can. I'm not saying people can't go out to get some fresh air, but going out um in your yard, in your backyard or taking a walk down your, your street and walking back home um to get your, just to get out of the house and get some fresh air is fine. But you always want to maintain that six-foot social distancing. It's very important. Um, if people are going to the supermarket and, and actually um the, the experts at the state and the CDC are asking people if you don't have to go to the supermarket this week um or next week, um or if you can have somebody who's not at as high of a risk as, as you might be if you're a high-risk um group, um that you should hopefully um try not to, to go. Um, or just go once and get everything you need and go home. Um, when you're going into the supermarket, again, you still want to maintain that social distancing. Very hard sometimes in a supermarket. The big thing about a supermarket is it's people in transit, they're walking. Um, so that, that gives you a little bit of immediate social distancing just because you're moving. Um, but you want to make sure that when you're stopped at the register or you're stopping in an aisle, that you're not closer than six feet um to people. So just keep moving. Um, the CDC did recommend using uh face masks um or a scarf or a bandana over your nose and your mouth when you're in an area that there might be um people, a lot of people, such as a supermarket. A lot of the supermarkets um have been great with wipes or spraying the wagons. Um, and if you, if you have your own wipe, you want to take with you, a bleach wipe or a Lysol wipe or whatever you have, take one with you when you get into the supermarket. Wipe your wagon off, um do your shopping, keep your hands away from your face, your nose, your eyes, your mouth, because this is where germs can get in and get into your respiratory system. Um, when you get back into your car, you put your groceries in your car, you get back into your car. If you have hand sanitizer, use the hand sanitizer once you're back in the car. Um, keep your hands away from your face. And then when you get home, take your groceries in, first thing you want to do is wash your hands. Um, because that's very important. People have um been calling and asking, do I have to wipe my groceries down? Um, and what the experts are saying is take your groceries out of the bag, throw the bags away, have your counter kind of divided to where the bags would be and that would be kind of the dirty area and you take the things out of the bags and that would be the clean area. Um, and then once you throw the bags away, disinfect your countertop, wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands, always. Um, I would um recommend that people who are over sixty take advantage of those hours that um the supermarkets have. Um, usually an, an hour in the morning, sometimes they have an hour in the evening too, depending on the supermarket. So do your shopping then. Um, when it's less crowded, um and when um there's people all of that same age group, which are the high-risk group that would be in there so that you can get your things done and go home. Um, but again, um the social distancing, the stay-at-home as much as you can are so important, particularly in the next few weeks. The less you have contact with people, the less you're likely to get the virus.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. You um have honestly been, you and your entire team have been a wealth of information and support for all of us. I know that when we are fielding phone calls and emails and questions, um that we're very lucky to have you as a resource. And I just want to reiterate to you, as we said in the past, um that every single one of us here on the council are here to support you and to do whatever it is that you and your team need um as we move forward. We can't thank you enough for being on the front lines of this. We're really lucky to have you. So thank you for your update and thank you for your time tonight, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So does my staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next we um are going to be going to our first responders, first starting with uh Chief Keenan with the Quincy Police Department. Chief Keenan, good evening. Can you hear us, Chief? You seem to be having some technical difficulties with being able to hear you. Let's go ahead and um Chief, while you're working through that, why don't we go over to uh Chief Jackson with the Quincy Fire Department? Chief Jackson, can you hear us? Chief Jackson, you there? Okay, while we try to work through that, let's go on.
I think they have to, do they have to hit the mute button down there? I know you.
No, I, I unmuted them, but uh we still can't hear them, so.
Yeah, they still have the, the uh signal with the um cross throat, the mic.
Yeah, I muted, I muted them back when we couldn't hear them. Yeah. Um, but uh let's try back, going back to uh Chief Keenan here. Here we go. We'll unmute you. There we go. Chief Keenan, can you hear us? We still can't hear you, sir. Can you turn up your microphone? That's a no. Um, Chief Jackson, can you hear us? Can you try yours again?
Can you hear me?
I can, yes. Uh, why don't we go to you, Chief Keenan? I'm gonna put you back on mute until we can work out um your microphone. Uh, thank you everyone for your patience. Chief Jackson, why don't you go ahead? Uh, we have Chief Jackson from the Quincy Fire Department.
Good evening, Madam President. Things relatively speaking have been going fairly well on, on the Fire Department. We're, we're very fortunate to have great support from uh Mayor Koch at his office as well as Commissioner Jones, as you just heard. Chief Keenan and Chris Devana from Brewster. Everybody's been excellent. It's been a real coordinated effort and as such, we find ourselves in a pretty good position right now. Um, we've made a lot of changes on the department over the last couple of weeks. Uh, one of the biggest is uh we changed our schedule. Uh, the members are coming in now for forty-eight consecutive hours, followed by six days off. And the reason that this was implemented was to uh cut in half the personnel changeovers at the station and kind of minimize in that respect that a chance of an exposure. Um, something else that we're doing is uh twice a week, our Hazmat Lieutenant, Lieutenant Sean Darcy, is going to all of the stations and he's sanitizing all of the living quarters and all age firehouses, um all of the apparatus, uh the cabs of the apparatus, the compartments where the tools are kept. He's sanitizing uh our drill school, where we currently are having the academy at St. Mary's. Home Depot on Center Street was good enough to donate to us P-100 masks, which is superior uh to the N-95s. And they donated enough so that almost every one of our members can have their own mask, which is uh, that's kind of a game changer. So uh that was very, very generous and uh very well received by us. And so as such, I've implemented something so that when our members are on the apparatus, responding to a call, anytime that they're in the apparatus is to go get fuel for the truck. They're to have these P-100 masks on uh because they're in such close proximity to each other at that time. Um, we've had one uh positive case on, on our job and as a result, we had uh three members in quarantine. We've had uh members that have had to self-isolate and as, and we've had a total of ten members tested. Uh, nine of them came back negative and that one member tested positive. He is doing much better and we expect him back to work within the next few days.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll uh throw that to my colleagues now for any questions. Uh, Counselor Mahoney?
Hi, Chief. First, I want to thank you and thank all of the members of your um, your staff for all the hard work that they're doing. I'm glad to hear that you're had, you um, that you took the proactive approach of um, of, of changing your schedules to make sure that they, that your men and women are um safe from harm's way as much as they possibly can. The one positive case, were you able to trace that back to any one specific thing here? Was it in Quincy or was it travel related or?
It was a girlfriend of this person who works in the healthcare system. Uh, thank you, thank you for your kind words.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely, it's definitely a um delicate dance we're doing here um both in Quincy and throughout the, the world really. So I thank you very much for all your hard work and you are right on the front lines. It's, it's the same thing with grocery store workers and all the other people, but really you're going into potentially the homes of people who need your help and um, and you don't know what you're going into all the time. So I do want to thank you very much. Um, I really don't have any other questions other than that, other than um maybe if you could share with us anything that you're seeing out in the city that, that um, that we could do to help, if there's anything we can do to help.
Uh, no, uh, thank you. You guys, we're in as good a situation as we are right now because of the support that you guys have given us over the years. Uh, so thank you very much. It's been, you know, all of your support over the years has really been a game changer. Let's, we find ourselves uh driving uh, you know, good apparatus. We have uh new air packs. We, we have a lot of things that you've given us that we have added to our cash over the last few years. And it's, it's really been uh, been able to put us in a place where we're, we're much better off than. I'm in communication daily with uh thirty-two other metro fire departments and we're considering the size of our city. We're in a really, really good place, all things considered. So it's in large part due to the support that we've gotten again from you, the council, and from Mayor Koch and his staff. So thank you.
You're welcome. I just know that the stress level must be high because it's, it's the unknown of what you're doing too as um, as far as what you're going into and just in general. I mean, I think everybody's stress level is exceptionally high because of this. But um, but again, thank you and thank you to all your um members who are helping to protect our city.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President.
Um, do any of my colleagues have any other questions for the chief? Okay. Seeing none, Chief, I just want to, um, of course, thank you on behalf of everyone here on the council and all the residents. Uh, you know, I, we say this all the time, but you know, especially during this time, if there truly is anything that you um at any of the firefighters across our city need, please do not hesitate to call any one of us. You know, obviously every single one of us is here to support you um as you guys do your work. So thank you, Chief, for your time tonight. I appreciate it.
I appreciate it, Madam President. Thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay, Chief Keenan, we're gonna come back to you um and see if your microphone works now. Do you want to give it a go? No, we can't hear you. Okay, keep working on that. I'm going to, um, if it's okay, go over to uh Mr. Chris Devana from Brewster. Chris, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you fine, how about you guys?
Good, we can hear you. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you. No, thank you for having us. Um, and thank you for the uh, for the invite. Um, it's uh, it's been a busy uh, I'll be honest with you, it's been a busy couple of months. The last uh month has felt like one uh constant day. Um, but we're very fortunate that we stood up our infectious disease unit early um in January and the, the goal for the infectious disease unit was not only to push out vital information to the first responders, but help it out, help out our municipalities. But this is a changing daily uh environment that we've been seeing and I know you guys have been monitoring it on the news as well and, and also at the government level. Um, things just change from, you know, day to day. We heard in January, don't worry about wearing masks in the um, in the streets. And now today we're saying, wear masks, wear scarves and, and things like that. So I'm glad we got ahead of it with the information and, and be able to track these um cases. Um, unfortunately, what I have to report is the cases are alarmingly high and our infectious disease unit are proc- processing about a hundred and fifty uh cases per day throughout our entire company. company. And we have an average of about ten per day in Quincy of COVID-type symptoms. They're not actually, you know, COVID-19 positive patients, but COVID-type symptoms, and that for us introduces an aggressive posture for PPE to protect those folks. In addition to the forward team, I'm sorry, in addition to the IDU, we developed a forward team, and the forward team is designed to help out the municipalities, the police chief, fire chief, mayor's office, et cetera, with plans and identifying any gaps in coverage that we need to address. And I'm very happy to announce that this week, we've deployed a forward team to Foxborough to assist with the first responder testing that's being done down there. So, last week, we trained sixty clinicians to do public, I guess, swabbing to obtain the samples, and we're gonna increase our posture with that, along with the governor's task force, to stand up these additional sites that they're looking to push out throughout the Commonwealth. With that being said, we're gonna have the, you know, additional bandwidth if something were to, you know, get going in the city to provide swabs to the municipality. Our supply chain remains an issue. We have some periodic outages in supplies. It seems to be that we can't buy them in quantity, so we have to place small orders daily to get those in, but we're very fortunate that we're getting a large quantity of masks from the Patriot's China shipment, as well as a donation from the Quincy Credit Union, so that helps us out as well. So, we'll continue to run the calls. We're very fortunate, like Chief Jackson had mentioned, we have a very healthy workforce. The folks that have identified as positive in our workforce have been either community or spouse transmission. We can't directly correlate any positive cases to patient contacts, which is helpful, and I think it helps with that aggressive posture of personal protection equipment, which we went company-wide a few weeks ago, that even administration dispatch, any properties will be under mask and eye protection. So, that's kind of where we're at. We're preparing for this surge, and we'll, you know, continue to work it forward, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, Mr. DeBonner. I'll go ahead and put it to my colleagues with any questions from Mr. DeBonner from Brewster. If you could raise your hands if anybody has questions from Mr. DeBonner. Okay, Chris, I actually have a quick question for you. When you said that your supplies are low, but you are getting some masks in, other than the masks, what other supplies is it that you guys are looking for? I'm putting that out there because, you know, we do get requests from incredible community groups and residents here in the city who are constantly looking for ways to be supportive and be helpful. So, if we can put that out there tonight, you know, what is it that Brewster is seeing a shortage of, and how can residents and how can folks help?
Yeah, to, you know, to kind of echo what Commissioner Jones had mentioned, everyone in our infectious disease unit system is a snowflake, and they really don't correlate back to, you know, anything, and it's very difficult to figure out who has it, who doesn't have it, unless you have those signs and symptoms. But if they're asymptomatic, it poses a big problem. With that being said, what we have within our company is what we call a high burn rate, and that burn rate is the personal protection equipment of eye protection, mask, gowns, gloves, and disinfectant. So, what we see is that eye protection or face shields are very limited and difficult to get, and also gowns are very limited to get. So, we're getting creative with the use of different style gowns, like ponchos, which give you, you know, kind of a full lap and back protection along with a hood, and we're also, you know, looking at different protections, like rain gear, right? So, when you have things that are water-permeable, you know, you have that opportunity of resistant barrier there. So, we're just trying to think outside the box a little bit of, you know, crucial shortages, but I would say, you know, right now is the face shields and gowns seem to be our biggest issue as of yet.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. We get the updates every day from the administration, as well as Commissioner Jones, and with that is some information that we do share with folks as well. So, to you, Mr. Walker, if you could just make sure that any of these kinds of requests or needs that they have are included in those updates, just so that we can continue to share those with folks. Again, there are a number of residents and amazing local groups that have organized, try to be helpful and provide support with supplies as well. So, just, I appreciate you letting us know that. Mr. DeBonner, please do keep us posted so that we can continue to share that with people who do have these resources to give to you guys.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time tonight, and we are able to now move on back to Chief Keenan with the Quincy Police Department. Chief, thank you again so much for your patience and for being here tonight. Can you hear us okay?
I can, Councilor. Thank you.
Excellent.
Are you good with me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. Just as an update with the Quincy Police Department, we have one member who was confirmed as a case of COVID-19. We have three that have been tested, they came back thankfully negative, and we have two that are pending testing outcomes. We put together a contingency plan over the last several weeks where if some of our members do become affected, we need to make manpower shifts and adjustments. We have come up with a plan to go to twelve-hour shifts with sixteen days on and sixteen days off. That will enable us to keep all of our offices healthy and able to come back to work healthy. We're continually monitoring the departments across the state to see where they are as far as their members becoming effective, and we have one, and a lot of them have a significant amount more. We actually took some measures early on to try and get ahead of this, and I think they're paying dividends at this point now. We pared down our civilian staff, we kept only a small staff that were absolutely necessary for the operation. We canceled all of our roll calls very early on, the officers just report back to the back deck, they meet with a sergeant quickly and get in their cruisers and go out in the street. We also stopped, we started implementing a system where we can use summonses instead of arrests as an alternative. The offenders are still held accountable, they'll see their day in court, but we don't have to physically take custody of them unless it's a crime of violence or something that's absolutely necessary. We've also used, we used to transport in cruisers, we've now used the wagon as our primary transport vehicle. We closed the lobby to the public fairly early on, although the doors opened so that if anyone needed an emergency, had an emergency and needed us, we could, we're available so they could come in the lobby, but just not for routine business. We've also limited our response to medical calls. We still go to medical calls when necessary, however, the minor calls and whatnot, we've scaled that back a little bit. We're also taking reports on the phone. We call back people when they call for complaint, like a past situation, like an identity theft or a past larceny, those type of things. We're handling those on the phone for the reports, and we've canceled all in-service training until further notice. We've also, the mayor was kind enough with Manit Health, the mayor requested Manit Health do the testing for first responders down at the West Quantum Street. We have priority testing down there, which is already utilized, just today, just opened, and we have already utilized that. So, that expedites the system, it gets us an answer quicker and gets the offices, should they need to come back, getting it back on the street a little quicker, or should they need to isolate, they have the ability to do that a little bit quicker. As far as equipment, we've been basically beg, borrowing, and stealing equipment. We are in pretty good shape right now for most equipment. We're very low on hand sanitizer and wipes, but our community partners have stepped up to the plate and assisted us a great deal with that Home Depot. Phoenix Construction gave us a number of masks. The major city chiefs, we just picked up two hundred N-95 masks today. Ruthie Jones through the Board of Health, the Health Department, she's provided with a lot of equipment. Boston University stepped up in their biomedical center, donated a lot of masks. Cagney's Restaurant, gloves. Quirk Auto, gloves. BJ's Wholesale has given us a lot of cleaning equipment to be able to clean and decontaminate the cruisers, and also our citizens have stepped up to the plate. We've had a lot of people that bring in private donations of masks, which is very nice. We continue to decontaminate the building. It's ongoing continuously. We've had our custodians are doing tremendous job, they're constantly decontaminating. We have procured a couple of spray machines with a high-level disinfectant. We're spraying the cruisers, we're spraying all the public areas of the station, handles, that type of thing. We've also had Kevin Segala from the School Department come in, and he has decontaminated a lot of the keyboards and a lot of the more sensitive electronics because they have like a Mister type of sprayer. Brewster Ambulances come in on a number of occasions also as well to decontaminate our cell there in the other night, decontaminate our cell and several of the cruisers. But I think the key to our success so far is the information sharing. We're constantly on the phone with the mayor's office, Mr. Walker and the mayor directly several times a day, also Ruthie Jones, many, many more than several times a day. She's continuously updating us on areas of concern, addresses and locations that people have tested positive and residing in these locations. That just gives our offices on the street a little head start that they know they need to take advanced precautions for their own safety. And also, we talked with Ruthie, basically seven days a week with the mayor, Ruthie and the mayor's office, seven days a week, and late at night and very early in the morning. So, I think we're on top of things, we're in good shape as far as equipment goes. Thankfully, most of our offices are healthy, and we're kind of, we're hanging in there like everybody else, trying to do our best.
Thank you, Chief, so much. I'm going to put it to my colleagues first for any questions. Councilor Mahoney, would you ask your hand up, counselor?
Thank you. Good evening, Chief. Thank you for all the hard work you and your folks are doing, and we appreciate you being out there on the front lines.
Thank you, Counselor.
I just wanted to know, what is the current procedure for 209A and 25080 restraining orders?
The 209A, it's basically...
The court's sending people to the police station, is my understanding. Is that right?
We've been doing that. We meet with the person usually ninety-nine percent of the time in person, and what we'll do is we can contact the on-call judge. We still get the restraining orders. The restraining orders now are being faxed up daily from the courthouse. We enter those into the computer immediately, so it really hasn't changed an awful lot as far as that goes. We do have different bill procedures in place where we're doing teleconferencing on some of the bill, the bill procedures. Our prosecutors are working with the defense attorneys. We generally do a conference call if bail is required. If bail's denied, then we work with the sheriff's department to get these folks out to the Norfolk County Jail. They've been very, very, very good with us as well. But the 209A system really is, it hasn't changed. Everybody's still getting serviced, and everyone, we're trying to keep everybody safe.
I guess my concern with that is, my understanding is that they were sending people to the police station to get 209As, right, to get a restraining order?
The courthouse?
You're sending, are you sending officers to the person's home and then doing the process from that?
Wherever, wherever we need to meet them, wherever they call, when we get the call, we'll either meet them, or if they come in the station, we'll handle it at the station. Although the courthouse, I believe, is open for emergency restraining orders and that type of thing, but the procedure really hasn't changed from us, as far as we're concerned.
Okay.
We're just doing a lot more of it on the phone.
Right. My concern with that is that, my understanding is that Quincy wasn't accepting folks into the courthouse to do it. They were sending people to the police station, you know, during business hours, the same as they would if it was at seven o'clock at night.
We have had some people come into the station, yes, but we service them just as we would at seven o'clock at night, and then we contact the judge, and the judge would either issue the order or do whatever's necessary. I know they extended the boundaries on the order, some of the orders, instead of expiring the next day at the beginning of the court, I think they're extending them out for ten days, so they're automatically active for ten days without the hearing, and then they put the hearing together, the hearing process together. But I do believe they are still servicing 209 victims at the courthouse as well. I don't know the procedure, whether they call first or what, but I believe they are still active that way.
Okay, because my concern was sending people to the police station, to me, just didn't, not in terms of the people looking for restraining orders, rights in terms of safety for the folks at the station. You know, the more people you send to the police station, same reason why you're doing, you know, summons arrangements rather than arrests, keeping, the fewer people you bring to the police station or go to the police station, the better it is for everybody.
I agree.
People are working that.
I agree, and we do, you know, we do, the offices do understand social distancing, so even if they were to meet somebody in the lobby for whatever reason, or meet them out front of the station, you know, they practice safe, safe social distancing as well.
And what have you been, what have you been finding in terms of crime in general? Has it gone down significantly because less people are out and about, or what's going on?
Yes, the calls for service have gone down significantly, thankfully. Some of the acuity of the calls, we have had some issues, some serious issues, but basically the street crime, the motor vehicle accidents, the routine calls that we go to all the time, they're down, which has been a help. Domestic violence has been pretty flat as well. We looked at it and ran some of the statistics from last year, and it's up a little bit, but not significantly at this point, but in general, the call volume is down. We normally do about a hundred and eighty calls a day for service. We're down to about a hundred and twenty, thereabouts, depending on the day.
All right, well, thank you. Those are all the questions I have. Keep up the good work, and hopefully you and everyone else in the department remain well and healthy.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir.
Just a quick, some kudos to the community police, Lieutenant Bena's group, especially Billy Mitchell and Officer Matt Miller. We've been, we still, we've always met every couple of weeks, every week, when things are going on. It has been quiet, but those guys have made it a point to hook up with me, you know, outside, plenty of room apart, just to give me an update on anything that's been going on in Ward, Ward One, and also up in Ward One towards Council of Crows, Ward Two area. So, I'm trying to stay in tune with them, but they're still doing an excellent job, Chief, out there in the community and keeping me abreast of what's going on, and meetings like tonight, just hearing from Ruth and yourself and Chris DeBonner with Brewster and Joe Jackson. I can reiterate some of that information back to those guys, and we can compare notes a little bit from a faraway distance, but Rob Bena and his crew have done an exceptional job too, being out and about and keeping me in tune, so I want you to just pass on a big thank you to them.
Will do. Thanks. Good to hear, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kane?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I just want to thank everyone. I want to thank Chris Walker, the mayor, his administration, Chief Keenan and Jackson, Ruth Jones. This has been a wildly, impressively managed operation for such an emergency that we're going through, so I really thank you for your effort and thanks for keeping us safe. I know this is such a strange time for everyone, so just to see the city's resources being utilized in such a positive way, helping the citizens, all citizens, all residents of the city right now, is just totally impressive, and really, you know, you hear a bunch of people talk about the federal level and its management of this, but it obviously comes down, at the end of the day, to the local level and coordinating with state, you know, departments as well. So, yeah, I just want to thank you. There's no questions that I have. The information that I'm receiving is very useful to convey to constituents of Ward Three, and I know that I, along with other area residents, appreciate what you're doing, so thank you very much and stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor DeBonner, I see your hand up?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. If I could, through you to Chief Keenan. Chief, thank you for all your hard work out there. Just to kind of talk a little bit about, obviously, the crime and everything, but how about the overdoses? And this could kind of go on to, as well as Chief Jackson at Fire and Chris DeBonner over Brewster. How about the, any drug overdoses or any knock-in? Is that kind of like, is it more or less with what's going on today?
I think it's fairly consistent. We haven't seen a big uptick, but we still do have occasionally, where there's been a couple of incidents even as recently as today where we've deployed some knock-ins. So, we are still, we're still responding to all the overdoses, and I don't see where it's really spiked, but I don't see where it's really abated either, unfortunately.
That's good. Thank you. I, you know, do you, I know, and obviously Lieutenant Glenn had had some information and data based on the previous years. Do we have any deaths at this point this year at all from that?
Yes, I don't have a number, but yes, we have.
Okay.
We have had a few. I think it's down a little bit from last year, just as far as blush, I believe it's down a little bit last year, but not significantly.
You know, just in general, I thank you guys for all your hard work and women. I want to thank the fire department and Chief Jackson, as well as Chris DeBonner over Brewster and their group. Chris Walker, I know you've done a great job with giving us a lot of information every day. I think it was the five o'clock email update, and I think Madam President alerted you that one day it was like fifteen minutes later or something, but I want to thank the mayor as well, and I think it's a collaborative group, Commissioner Jones, and we're looking forward to the future, and hopefully we can mitigate this whole situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Mahoney?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Chief, thank you very much for the update. I just was wondering, when, is it the 16 days on and 16 days off? When did we implement that? How long have you been on?
We have not. We have not. That's a contingency plan. If we, we're monitoring continuously, anyone that's sick is requested to call in and let us know if they're not feeling well or if they're going to be tested or if they have any signs and symptoms. So my hope is that we never have to implement that, but we do have it at the ready should we need it. If that would be, you know, a situation where we're losing a lot of our offices to the illness and we have to make contingency plans to keep our other offices safe and healthy. So that would be like a last resort, but we do have it in place. It's all set to go. All of the offices have been assigned to either a day or night shift and whatever groups they're on. So we have it ready and in place, but I just don't, I hope we don't have to use it.
So just out of curiosity, you said you have one member currently that has tested positive?
That's correct. He's, actually, the member is, I spoke with him a number of different times and he's feeling better. He's on the mend. I think he's going to be 100% at some point. He still is not completely out of the woods yet, but he, I believe he'll be making a full recovery and he shouldn't be too much longer.
That's very thankful. And there were three members that were tested, but you don't have the results yet, is that what you said?
That's correct. We anticipate that they'll be back anytime now. They were just basically, it was different exposures. I'm not overly concerned, but you just never know. We had a couple of offices that were involved in a CPR situation where they were very, very heavily exposed. They thankfully came back and they tested negative. So I'm optimistic that these other offices will test negative as well. But we have to wait and see where the whim, basically, of the testing process.
So now, I'm not trying, just, just out of curiosity, when you say that you hope you don't have to, what would indicate the need to go to the 16 days off, 16 days on? Because with having a member that's sick, I just, I do get concerned with your members just to make sure that everybody's, everybody's being taken care of with the fire department having already instituted something similar. So I'm just curious to know what would be that.
Well, it would be a couple of different factors. If we start, if we start seeing people become ill and it starts to challenge our ability to respond properly, that would be one consideration. The other consideration would be I'm monitoring the trends statewide with the mass major city chiefs every day or several times a day, all the city chiefs, major city chiefs report out. And the president of the major city chief, Brian Kye from Chelsea, puts out a, an email with the updates as to, as far as what the other departments are doing. So if we start seeing other departments start to trend up as well, even though we're not, that would be an indicator as well that I might have to take a look at and implement it.
The other communities, are they, are they also not in the, have they not instituted a change in the, the way they're staffing?
There's only one that I'm aware of, and I know they were looking at 16 hour, 16 day shifts and 12 hour shifts, daily shifts, was Cambridge. I don't know if they've implemented it yet. I've spoken to a lot of the chiefs and most of them are just kind of standing pat to see where things go.
Yeah. Hopefully, like you said, it's not going to be something that you need. It's just with the fact that we're going to be going into, and it's been, you know, it's been talked about in every news channel, I don't think we can get away from that, we're going into the next 10 days being the critical time period and hopefully we'll, we'll get through that without having to institute that. But I do get concerned for them, for everybody that's in having to, to work through all of these things and to be on the front lines of this because you're the, you're the first responders that are going out there and you're going to be the first ones to be potentially impacted by that. The other concern that I had is that you said that you, that you were struggling to get the equipment and later you said you had the equipment. So what is it that you, what is it that you're not, you don't have and what is it that you need? And, and, you know, how can we be of help for you?
Basically, cleaning supplies to clean this. So, you know, like Lysol wipes or Clorox wipes to wipe down the vehicles or if the offices, the doorknobs or the steering wheel, that type of thing. Clean up some of the public surfaces down around here. We are continually decontaminating with a sprayer we purchased. And actually, the school department gave us a sprayer that we can spray all the solution on to try and decontaminate the station, which I think is going pretty well. We decontaminate the cell block, we decontaminate the wagon when we use it. So, but basically, it's cleaning supplies. We do, we do have a number of masks, but they're going pretty quickly because offices are utilizing them a little bit more when they go to some of these homes and in certain situations they utilize them. So we're in decent shape with masks. We just picked up another 200 today from the major city chiefs. We do have some gowns, Tyvek suits, that type of thing. So all in all, enhanced sanitizer, we got a lot of that from the emergency management and through MEMA. So we're in decent shape right now, but if it really, we get a surge, we'll probably need masks, we'll definitely need cleaning supplies.
And then for the community police officers that are out on the bikes, are they wearing the masks as well or is that something that you instituted or is that not something you're doing? Because again, the, the fire chief mentioned that he has his men wearing masks, so I'm just curious.
They have, they have the mask available should they choose to wear them. We're not mandating it at this point because it is a little bit cumbersome for the police officers when we're dealing with the public. But when they feel that they're in a situation, they, they have that option, they can wear them all day long on the cruiser or on the bikes or on the motorcycles should they opt to. They are available for them. We have the surgical masks that are a little bit more comfortable if they're going to use those all day. But we do recommend they use the N95 mask if they get themselves in a situation where they could be exposed a little bit longer or to somebody that actually tested positive.
And then out of curiosity, for the cruisers, when the shift ends, who is it, is it, who goes in and cleans those cruisers before the next shift takes over?
A little of both. It's the offices and that's why we need the wipes to clean it out. But several times a day, the custodians have helped us out and gone in and used the spray cleaner. We've also had Brewster ambulance come down on a number of occasions and do a complete decon as well with hospital grade, hospital grade solution. So it's continuous. And so basically, it's the custodians, the offices themselves, and then Brewster ambulance was very good about doing that as well. They've been great. They've been a tremendous community asset.
Yes, they sound, I appreciate the presentation that they just did. Then one last thing, when we were discussing earlier with Commissioner Jones, when it comes to social distancing, and I know that we, it's very difficult because we have, you know, we have a lot of people that are home and a lot of those people are young people. So we have a lot of people that, you know, kids wanting to play sports at the parks. I know we've taped off the parks. But when you do see crowds of more than 10 hanging out or, and are the police breaking those up or what's the, what's the protocol for that?
Yes, we actually have been doing that. We've been getting a number of calls in that regard. We send offices down there to break them up. At this point now, any, any kind of a group or any kind of organized sport, basketball or street hockey or anything like that, we're immediately going down and making them cease and desist. I know the city is, is cordoned off all the basketball hoops to try and resolve that. We've actually put out extra patrols on the nice weather, put out extra patrols just to patrol the parks in itself. The offices on, all the shifts have been notified that if they go by a park and there are people gathering there, especially the kids, that, you know, they're to break them up as best they can. It's, it's a challenge, you know, especially with the beautiful weather. You want to see people out and enjoying the good weather and getting some exercise and, you know, healthy alternatives, but we can't have them gathering in large groups, so we do break them up. But it has been a challenge.
Yeah, no, I know. And by no means, I, I understand that it's a challenge. It's just that it can be difficult. I know that that's probably the number one thing I get, you know, people will send you videos, screens of, you know, of shots of them showing you that people are congregating. And I usually say it's probably faster if you call Quincy Police Department than to call me because I, you know, I'm not, like, it's any place, it's not going to change anything. So I do appreciate everything that all your members are doing. I know, like I said to, to the fire chief, this is a delicate dance that we're all in and it's, it's, it's not, not an easy task and it's been, it's, it kind of was a curveball thrown at everybody. It is so disheartening to hear that, you know, like even Brewster ambulance saying that they have to order things in small quantity to protect yourself or come up with new innovative ways to protect yourself when this is something that we shouldn't have to, it, it shouldn't be like that. But, but I do appreciate all the hard work that everybody's doing to help contain and slow down this curve of this virus that we can keep people safe in Quincy. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Do any of my other colleagues have any other questions for Chief Keenan?
Madam President, I see something.
I'm sorry?
Could I say something, Madam President? I just wanted to interject for one second.
Chief Jackson, yeah, sure. Please.
Sorry, you know, with all the conversation, it kind of went, Counselor Palmucci had mentioned to Chief Keenan about crime. We get so saturated talking about this COVID virus. I just wanted to give my department props. Today, we had a house fire on 24 Brook Road today and they pulled a woman out of a second floor window and got a good rescue. So I just wanted you and the citizens to know that we're still responding to and doing a great job at house fires. So kudos to the guys from Group Three today on my job. They did a great job this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions for Chief Keenan or really Chief Jackson is still here as well, as well as Commissioner Jones? Okay, with that, Chief Keenan, thank you so much. I apologize again so much for the technical difficulties at the beginning of this. And I appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight. And, you know, to you, to Chief Jackson, to Commissioner Jones, and even Mr. Jabona over at Brewster, you know, I don't think that we can all say it enough. We are all here to do whatever it is that you guys need. If we can direct resources to you guys, if we can share that to our networks, if we can answer constituents' calls for help to say, what can I do to support our first responders, please let us know. You know, I know every single one of my colleagues, I see their posts, I see their updates every single day. They're constantly reaching out to their constituents to let them know how they can be supportive of you guys as you guys are out there on the front lines. So please use us as a resource. My colleagues have phenomenal touch points with the residents to do so. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Counselors.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll wrap it up with Mr. Walker with an update on the appropriation when we had met last, as well as some updates with the Father Bill's initiative and the testing facility. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I first want to thank on behalf of the mayor, the department heads that preceded me at this meeting. At times like these, I think we recognize that just how capable and talented our leadership at the police department, the fire department, EMS, and our public health department is. And it's a time like this that we really get to see that firsthand, particularly Ruth Jones in the health department. I know you all alluded to it, but Commissioner Jones and her team are truly doing extraordinary work under very difficult circumstances right now. I've been fortunate enough to see it on the ground and they really are making the city a safer place right now. During the last meeting, I sort of talked a little bit about the constant conversations that the mayor's having, not only with the department heads, but his colleagues in government, other mayors, the governor, the lieutenant governor, some of our nonprofit agencies, people that are on the front lines, medical providers. He brought together a group to discuss the issues facing those communities. And those discussions are sort of informing the actions that we're taking as a city and the decisions he's making. And one issue that emerged almost right away through Father Bill's place, Main Spring, was how do we protect some of the most vulnerable people in our community, the homeless population? How do we protect them from this? So working with Father Bill's, they called, we started working through some issues and obviously the strategy immediately went to what we do need to mitigate the issues that they may be facing in the shelter. And obviously, the shelter is a confined space, doesn't provide the room that we need under the guidelines that have been provided by the government at this point. There's not six feet of space between the beds at Father Bill's shelter. So the concept, and I also want to thank old friend, Counselor Joe Finn, for his leadership in bringing stakeholders together and really leading the effort on this to have a discussion on how do we make our homeless population a lot safer now. And the concept that was developed was, well, we need to depopulate Father Bill's. There's roughly 100, give or take, guests at Father Bill's. If there was some way we could find that we could drop that number in half or something along those lines, create the space at Father Bill's and then create a space in another facility where we could provide that six feet of space and the social distancing that's necessary to perhaps prevent a major outbreak within the homeless community at Father Bill's. So mayor got on the phone with Paul Gorman of the YMCA. It was literally one phone call. Mr. Gorman said, what do you need and when do you need it? Immediately offered the facility on Coden Street for use in this purpose. And more importantly than the facility, and this probably would not be possible without this piece of it is the staff component of it. YMCA has dedicated staffing to this depopulation center that's been created at the YMCA. And that's just a huge, huge piece. I know in my emails, the conversations we've had, everything comes down to staff. We can find facilities to do just about anything, but everything in the end comes down to staffing. And for the wider step up, the opera bringing back some of their furloughed employees to help staff this facility was truly tremendous. So with that process working, the city is, through the appropriation approved by this body, has contributed $50,000 to the YMCA to meet those staffing costs and any other costs they may incur through this process. Up to right now, there are roughly 47 guests of Father Bill's at the YMCA and a like amount at the current shelter. The population center at the YMCA is staffed 24/7 by a combination of both Father Bill's and, as I mentioned, the YMCA. There's medical care being provided by our partners at Manette Community Healthcare and also at healthcare for the homeless. There's been an outpouring of contributions in terms of food and other, and snacks and those sorts of things. I know Walburg is the food truck is going to be down there at some point. So there really has been a lot of collaboration and people have really come together to make this, this work. Well, it's obviously still going to be a challenge going forward, particularly as we see the numbers start to surge. But we think we, we're confident that the right thing was done and it took the partnership of Father Bill's, the YMCA and the city, as well as Manette Community Healthcare to make that happen. So that's ongoing right now. Another $50,000 allotment of the appropriation the council approved went to something that we did discuss specifically at the last meeting that was providing a tent for a mobile testing facility at Manette Community Healthcare, Manette Community Health Center in North Quincy. Manette has been absolutely tremendous. They are a community health center in every sense of the word. They've been with us at the table every single day. They're providing a critical service for both who are, are in the insurance pipeline have a plan via the traditional sources, you know, Boston Medical Center they partnered with, they partnered with South Shore Hospital, they partnered with BID Milton, they partnered with a number of agencies in Boston, but also the folks that need it that may not be within the system. This is where Manette comes in very, very importantly. They're working directly with Father Bill's in Main Spring, providing the services they need now down there, and they've just been tremendous. So this mobile tent, mobile testing facility is now operational at Manette's North Quincy facility, upwards of 200 people have been tested both in the Manette's brick and mortar facility, which they would be tested in anyways, and through this outdoor facility, enclosed facility that's outdoors. I know some of you have been privy to some concern from some members in the neighborhood relative to the location of this facility. I want to stress that there's absolutely no added threat of increased transmission by the operation of this fully tented, fully enclosed facility. In fact, in and of itself, it's an added safety precaution. People, folks are not allowed to get out of their cars as they drive through. So this is a difference, the difference here is that as opposed to driving or walking to Manette, a patient, and getting out of their car and walking into the door at Manette to get a test, which they would always be able to do, the patient now is kept in their car and they're not allowed out of their car as they go through this tented facility. That was another $50,000 from the appropriation. Other items that we have spent from the appropriation approved by the council, we've contributed $100,000 to food pantries in the city. $63,000 has been spent on the personal protective equipment that we mentioned during the last meeting. That material has been ordered. I believe it's still a week or two away from delivery. And we have spent $30,000 for citywide mailing, actually, two pieces, one in English and one translating into Chinese. I think it's fairly evident, but communication is a huge piece of what we're doing as a city. The mayor's giving daily updates. We're obviously communicating with you as much as we possibly can. But there are people out there that may not be on Facebook, they may not be watching YouTube videos. So we wanted to get into everybody's home to tell them where they can find the best sources of information, who they can call, where those areas of information are. So we thought it was appropriate to send out a postcard to all households in the city. That's essentially where we are on the city appropriation. I can get into the Affordable Housing Trust piece now, Madam President, or you want to just stop there for a question from this piece?
Why don't we stop there to open it up for any questions specifically with the appropriation and the work over at Father Bill's? So to my colleagues, do you have any questions on that piece from Mr. Walker? Okay, I see two hands. Counselor Mahoney will go to you first, and then Counselor Paimucci. Counselor Mahoney?
Thank you, Madam President. Chris, I missed the first part when you said Father Bill's. How much of the appropriation went to Father Bill's?
$50,000.
So $50,000, as I thought, $50,000. And how has that transition gone? And first of all, I want to, with this being a high-risk population, I just want to applaud the city and Manette Health and the YMCA for stepping up to, and Joe Finn, to help organize and help make sure that we're putting our best foot forward for this particular group as well. So could you just tell me how it's all working at this point?
Sure. It's being managed very methodically by the team at Father Bill's. Basically, guests are screened at Father Bill's, the Broad Street facility, and then a determination is made which facility that they'll go to. I believe the policy is to keep the greater risk of the population at Father Bill's and the lesser of the risk at the YMCA. But obviously, that's a moving, that's a bit of a moving target. Manette and Healthcare for the Homeless is on scene. They're taking temperatures of guests as they go into the facility so they know whether or not they need to be diverted to testing or some other facility. We are also working directly with them in terms of providing the information and anything that they may need. Beyond that, it seems to be working. Obviously, it's very challenging. It's very new to everyone. Father Bill's has really stepped up. Manette has stepped up, and the Y, of course, has stepped up in a big way.
They really have. One other question that I have, because as we all know that people are being asked to stay home, and in Father Bill's situation, it's usually overnight, and then during the day, the people who use Father Bill's typically leave and go other places. What's happening during the day?
Yeah. That's a great question, Counselor. Father Bill's has transferred essentially to a 24/7 operation at both facilities, I believe, at this point in time, at least the Broad Street location. They are offering a full-day stay as part of the shelter program, and for the very reason you mentioned. People would go out during the day, and they'd be able to go someplace, go sit in the library or go to a store or go to a restaurant. There's literally no place for anyone to go. They can't even use a restroom. So Father Bill's recognized very quickly that they would have to maintain their operation. And that's been going on for a couple of weeks now that they've been running a full-day program.
Okay. And is there anything, I mean, I realize that some of the Y staff is helping out in that situation too. Is there anything, I know that there's a lot of generous people in the community, and they're always looking for things too, and there's plenty of places to help. But is there anything that Father Bill's in particular is in need of, or any of the other potential nonprofits that are helping out the community that we can direct people to?
Sure. You know, Father Bill's, I think I would direct you directly to Father Bill's on what their needs are. Off the top of my head, I can't think of what their most pressing need is. As I mentioned, the $100,000 contribution to the food pantries clearly are nonprofits that are going to be under some deal of strain for a considerable amount of time, and that was the rationale for the $100,000 contribution to the food pantries. We do also have, I was going to get to this a little bit later, but I can mention it now, through the Quincy Foundation, which is the organization that generally runs the Christmas parade and Flag Day parade and gives to charities around the city on a regular basis. It's now set up, there are a special fund called the Quincy Relief Fund, so folks can go if they can give. We know people are struggling right now, a lot of people are struggling right now, but if they do want to help and they can give, it's www.kinseyrelieffund.com. And we're accepting donations, and any and all donations will go directly to organizations that need it.
And then I think also the YMCA paused there, and I appreciate that because it's important for people to know that there's, and these things are on the website too, but I just want to make sure people that are tuning into this will know that. But the YMCA too has paused all membership fees, and they're asking members if they can to be able to donate, maybe their membership fee back to that as well. One other question I have, Chris, and you know, the police chief mentioned that sanitizing is something that they need. Is that something that we're supplying to them as well, or is it just hard to get at this point?
I know the facilities are being desanitized or sanitized, disinfected, every, at least twice, at least twice a day, both the YMCA and Broad Street. Now, when it comes to shortage of supplies and what we have and what we don't have, I think that the shortage comes, gets into some of the things that we would have at our homes, the wipes, the spray, those sorts of things that we are having a little bit of trouble getting, although the chiefs both mentioned some of our great community partners that have come through. The city itself, and the chief mentioned this as well, the fog machine or the mister that the city has that's going into just about every building on a regular basis, the Police Department multiple times a day. We, from talking to Commissioner Hines, we're in a good place when it comes with that particular thing. We're in a good place for the cleaning supplies, to disinfect, disinfect the buildings on a daily basis. But when it comes to the hand-to-hand stuff, the things that, you know, you might get over the counter, that are pretty helpful, those might be the areas where we're lacking right now.
So they actually say that those don't actually even work, unfortunately, because they're bacteria-killing, and this isn't a bacteria, it's, so, so water supposedly the best thing that you can use, I realized that. And the one last question I had, I realized that we're trying to get as much communication out to people, and I think Commissioner Jones did mention that the best thing we can do for the next two weeks is try to get your grocery shopping done and stay in, stay home for the next two weeks. And I know, I think two weeks ago, the mayor did do the reverse 911 call. Everybody are planning on doing that again to potentially just encourage people to stay home for those that, I mean, is that something that's being considered as well?
Yes, it's being considered. We try to use that rarely, so people don't get sick of it, and they recognize, and they recognize it as an emergency. But that is certainly something we can consider.
Yeah, well, considering that the message through the state, through the country really, is that the height of this is going to be in the next two weeks, and everybody's going to be seeing it at different times, I just was wondering, you know, just to really push the message home, to remind people that this is, this is the way we get past this, the way we get past this and get our freedoms back is to try to follow these rules, which are hard. I'm not suggesting that they're not. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Paimucci?
Thank you. I forget what I was going to say, but I will say, Counselor Mahoney, it's starting to get dark out. I suggest you get out of the woods. The West Quincy Coyotes are going to attack.
All right, I like to keep it fun.
Chris, what effect does the pandemic have on the public safety headquarters timeline, and specifically the relocation of Father Bill's?
That's a good question, Counselor. Quite honestly, we haven't visited that the last several weeks.
I don't recall what the timeline was for their relocation, but I wonder, you know, I don't know if...
Well, the first thing, that ball is, it continues to move, albeit in a, probably a slower fashion. It continues to move down the field as the council voted, God, it feels like five years ago, a couple months ago, to issue the taking orders that included 37? No? The Broad Street, the Broad Street building across the street from the current Father Bill's, which is the location...
39.
Thank you. Of the proposed new facility. So that taking, the formality of that taking is moving down the road, that the tenants have been notified, the landlord's been notified. Within that eminent domain taking, there's a time in which the tenants have to vacate the building and be relocated. At that time, the city will be in the building, hopefully before then, the city and Father Bill's can get into that building and determine what's necessary to do the conversion of that facility into, at the very least, a temporary facility prior to the full buildout of Father Bill's long-term vision of the Housing Resource Center. So we're certainly not slowing down. The mayor's made it clear to his department heads that we're certainly going to do everything we can to confront this crisis right now, but the businesses of the city is going to continue moving. And I honestly, Counselor, as I'm thinking about it, as I'm talking, I don't expect it right at this moment to having any impact on timing right now.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Chris. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Counselor. Do any of my other colleagues have questions for Mr. Walker on this topic before we move on? No? Okay, Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Madam President. Just one quick other thing. I know the council wanted to hear a little bit about. As we've discussed, the mayor asked the Affordable Housing Trust Committee several weeks ago to award, to set aside $1 million for an emergency rental assistance program for people that have been adversely or disproportionately impacted by this crisis. You know, the original concept, as the facts on the ground at the time were, was this was going to be a very difficult situation for the hospitality industry. That bore out to be true. And really, the thinking was that, you know, beyond the resources that would normally be available for folks when you get to unemployment, that some of these employees and hospitality industry in particular get a little bit of a whack when they go to file for unemployment because, quite frankly, that their salaries are based to some degree on gratuity, and that's not always reflected. So when they go to collect unemployment, they may be entitled legally to a substantial amount less than folks who are working a standard salary position. So that was the original concept, that we wanted to get in as fast as we could, to help some people immediately that won't be able to pay their rent because they have not been working. The discussion sort of broadened from that, and obviously, the impacts on the private sector are far greater than just the hospitality industry. So what we've essentially done is broken the program into two parts. One being administered by the Quincy Chamber of Commerce, and that's the hospitality end of it, and one for other service industry or other folks impacted by the COVID crisis that are facing a housing issue. So last week, the applications opened. The Chamber has processed about 100 applications through its program to date, and QCAP is running that, the other piece. They've processed about 40 applications, and payments are expected, I believe, for the end of this week. The checks to the landlords are going to go out for that first round from these programs.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Walker. I will push it to my colleagues with any questions that they might have for you. Counselor Paimucci, I see your hand up, and Counselor Harris, I believe I saw your hand up as well. So Counselor Paimucci?
Chris, how many applications have there been so far, and what is the anticipated first month's payments going to be?
Yep. Again, the Chamber has about 100 applications. QCAP has about 40 right now.
And has every application been granted, though?
No. No.
So what's the turnaround time in terms of when an application comes in to when folks know whether or not a...
Yep, the Chamber expects to have the checks out by the end of this week for the ones that are approved. So that's less than a week.
A week, yeah, okay. Relatively the same amount of time you're expecting with QCAP?
I would think so, Counselor, as you know, and maybe I should have mentioned this in my intro, it's a little bit different because QCAP has a program. This is what they do. So this program is going to supplement what they're doing, and it's going to filter into their existing logistical operation. But I would assume that it'll be the same timeframe.
And certainly, kudos to both of those organizations, the Chamber and QCAP, for taking this on, and, you know, they both have a tremendous workload on their shoulders as it is, dealing with their own existing constituencies in the city during this crisis. So to take this additional work on, you know, obviously, thank them quite a bit. And I, do you have, in terms of the program, do you have a timeline for how long rents will be paid for people? Is it a per-application basis? Is that how the determination is made?
We're going month-to-month right now. My assumption is, in a lot of these cases, it'll be two months at least, and revisiting it every step of the way as we go, keeping an eye on where the money's going, how the money's being drawn down, and where we're going to be, you know, relative to perhaps that third month or that second month even. But right now, the applications are being processed for the April 1st rent payment, and that's our, that's our goal right now. But I think the assumption is at least two months in a lot of these cases.
And there was $1 million set aside for this, right?
Yes, sir.
Up to $1 million?
Yep.
Okay. All right, it's a terrific program, and thank the Affordable Housing Trust for authorizing this use. And for folks who don't know, it is a, it is a specific use in the enabling legislation for people, the trust fund, to deal with situations like this. So it's a great resource. And again, just as a reminder, that money that is in that fund and our ability to have $1 million to pay Quincy residents' rent who are negatively impacted financially due to the crisis here, that is funded with payments from developers. So that money is a direct result of the economic growth that we've seen in the city, especially over the last couple of years. Obviously, I think it's important that Quincy residents get a benefit from that, from development. And it only really works if residents get a benefit, and I think this is, you know, a perfect example of a very important benefit in a time of crisis that residents are getting and have access to as a result of the economic development and the increase in activity in the city over the past couple of years. So thanks, Chris. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Walker? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Walker, thank you so much for your time and for your updates. And yeah, I will try to give you a 15-minute window of leniency if we don't get the updates from now on. No, but no, seriously, thank you.
To be fair to you, that was like two hours late that day.
We'll call it an hour and call it even. No, but no, honestly, I mean, like, all of these, all of these different, you know, departments and folks you're coordinating this information with and relaying that back to us, obviously, it's been a really good, open line of communication, and I can't thank you out of the mayor and the rest of the administration enough for that. So thank you. So next, we are going to go ahead and move on with the regular order of council business, which is approval of previous meeting minutes. We will be reviewing them at our next meeting, which is next week. Do we have any communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards? Okay, seeing none, unfinished business and proceeding meeting? Seeing none, reports of committees? No? Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance? Counselor Harris, I see your hand up?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. It's really, really with a real heavy, hot, the passing of a 46 resident neighbor from this horrible disease that we just were experiencing and fighting. Dan Dewey, a lot of folks would know Dan from the veterans. He was a member of the, president of the Veterans Council at one time. He was also the commander of the Caddy Posts, a member of the Mickelson Post, and just a good neighbor. My heart goes out to all of his wife, his family. Last night, there was a celebration of his life in front of his house. Everybody in the neighborhood came out to and kept their social distance and paid respect to a Vietnam veteran, in a real, real... Sorry, I'm getting my, I'm getting wrapped up with this. It's a real great guy when it came to the veterans. He did so much for them. So with that, my heart goes out to the Dewey family and all his friends, everybody who knew him. And thank you, Madam President, and everybody, please be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for sharing that with us. Okay, does anybody, Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to alight a little bit about, you know, April, every year, I always say this on the council, April is Autism Awareness Month. So Autism, World Autism Awareness Day was April 2nd, a couple of days ago. Today's the 6th, so just want to shout that out. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. DeBona. Okay, so anyone else for a presentation of petitions, memorials and remonstrance? Okay, if my colleagues will have me, I just want to for a moment. This is a fellow neighbor of ours too in Ward 6. Recently, actually, he moved over to the Marina Bay area, Mr. Larry Raski. He is, for those who know him or know of him, was an incredible political powerhouse, but was really committed to really serving his community locally, wherever he calls home. His wife still is here with us in Marina Bay and, you know, similar to what Counselor Harris was saying, I mean, with, with, you know, at this time to, to lose somebody, I cannot imagine, you know, the, the additional challenges and difficulties on top of it. And if we could just remember the, the Raski family and, and all of those who are facing these challenges during these difficult times, I would appreciate that. So thank you, everyone, for listening. Next, we will go ahead and move on to motions, orders and resolutions. Okay, seeing none, scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. Counselor McCarthy, I believe you had one that you wanted to schedule?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. If we could, next week, I assume next Monday we'll be on again at 5:30. I don't know if 4:30 is too early to schedule a finance committee meeting and the subject would be the Broad Meadows appropriation that we passed on a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Hines has his presentation that he will get to everyone this week to take a look at and it's the $3 million appropriation to make sure that Broad Meadows is up to par in regards to safety for future incidences like floods. So they're going to raise the equipment, furnaces, et cetera, in Broad Meadows. So I'd like to put that on the schedule and we can make it to be determined on the time, Madam President, if you want, if you think that's too early.
You got it, Counselor. So we're going to go ahead and schedule a finance committee meeting one hour prior to the start of the regular council meeting next Monday. Time to be determined. I appreciate your flexibility. I will make sure to follow up with folks to confirm their availability before we send it out for the agenda meeting this week. But thank you, Counselor. Does anybody else have a scheduling of committee meetings and/or public hearings? Okay, seeing none. I will remind folks that our next council meeting is a back-to-back one this month. We had originally scheduled it as such to be respectful of April location for those who have kids, but of course, you know, that's up in the air. Even still, we want to, again, you know, for those of you who are listening, my colleagues and I want to make sure that we are staying on schedule and doing our job, which is to meet and convene as a council body to discuss issues that we are committed to moving forward with. And so of course, our top priority is to ensure the safety and wellbeing of all of the residents here across the city, but so too, while remaining sensitive, do we want to make sure that we're staying on top of our business, that we are, you know, responsible for taking care of for you all. So with that, we will be convening again here through Zoom next Monday, April 13th. Time to be determined and we will get that out to the public this week. So everyone, thank you so much again for your time and patience. I apologize for the technical difficulties we had this evening, but I appreciate all of you taking part and being patient with me through this. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, everyone. Please stay safe and have a good night.
Night.
Night. Bye, everyone.